Twenty twenty five Planning Commission meeting for the city of Watertown to order. Roll call, please, Brandy.
Oleski.
Present.
Kukacek.
Present.
Spire.
Present.
Colehane.
Present.
Hayes.
Here.
Dolly.
Yep.
Dargus Johnson.
Here.
And Albie and Tate, who are the alternates, are absent. We do have a full quorum.
Beautiful. Third item on the agenda is an invitation for public comment participant submittal. At the end of this agenda, we will take time to discuss items that are not otherwise on the agenda. Please let Brandy know before the meeting is over. Item number four, approval of the agenda. I take a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
Well, we have a motion second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Afo, same sign. Motion passes. I would, number five is approval of the minutes from March twentieth, twenty twenty five. I take a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Is there any corrections discussion regarding the minutes? Corrections discussion, anything regarding the March twentieth minutes? Hearing none. All those in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Post, same sign, motion passes. We are on the regular agenda, so we're at item number six A. I'm going to recuse myself for this particular item. And then, so then Mr. Spear, Commissioner Spears will take over as chair.
This time, Brandy, you want to go ahead and brief us on the agenda item?
Yes, thank you, Spire. Also, I wanted to clarify when I said that we have a full quorum. We have a full board and a quorum, so just for clarity. So this item here that we are looking at today is a rezon request for the Mansell second addition that this board has seen a couple of times come through in the past years. The request here today, this exhibit that I have pulled up, which I should probably share on Teams, is showing the area in this hatched area here or on the other map we have. Here in the blue outlined area with the hatch, that the request is to rezone this from R one that it currently exists as when it was annexed in twenty eighteen as the R one single-family residential district. And the proposal is to rezone this to R three multifamily residential. So this, this rezone would also have a subsequent replat with it that would change the configuration of the current lots out there. The, there's currently five lots that are zoned the R one. And if this were to be rezoned, they would zone this R three lot as one lot and then have the two remaining R one lots on the west side and then the R one on the east. So lot two A here, this would be one point zero seven acres and then lot two B, which will be here if replatted and rezoned, to, and this will be two point five five acres. So that's what's being requested to be rezoned to the R three. So obviously, it's meeting the minimum lot size requirements. There is adjacent R three zoning designation to the north there on, on the north side of South Lake Drive and adjacent to Lake Compeska. There was a wetland delineation that was performed, which we did not have previously when we looked at the, these rezone requests. So in twenty twenty-three, they were requesting to zone this property CL, which would have had higher density sportsman condos and apartments. And then, the Planning Commission actually at that time approved it or recommended it to City Council. City Council denied it and a lot of that was there, a lot of that, a lot of the denials were because of the wetlands and the unknown. And then the higher density as well, too. So what the current owners, which the ownership of Campsco has changed. So Russell Warner is here and he is the acting agent for Campsco LLC. And what they're proposing today is that they would like to do some multifamily fourplexes. And they were proposing two. Now with R three, though, you can, you're not held to that, but that is what they're proposing. The other proposal for the rezone was in, later in twenty twenty-three, they were proposing the PUD planned unit development. And that was not recommended by Planning Commission. There was a lot of discussion, if you went back and looked at the minutes at all during that hearing, and then City Council also denied both requests for the rezones in twenty twenty-three. So other, I mean, the main, I, I believe that the main issue was the wetlands on, within this lot five area and the fact that they were proposing to develop that. In their PUD plan, they showed this area being developed. And in the meantime, then, they had the US Army Corps, well, the US Fish and Wildlife, a wetland specialist to perform a wetland study. And so then I included the map from that study that shows this green area as jurisdictional wetland areas. So you can see that in the previous request where they were proposing to develop, there was some developable area, but there was still a lot of wetlands that would not have been able to be developed. And even if the property were rezoned previously, they still would not have been able to develop that or fill the wetland. They were proposing detention ponds and whatnot, but that would have had to be looked at. And I mean, there's other options, too. They could, they could purchase credits from the Corps if they wanted to fill certain portions. But, so this wouldn't have changed anything, but I, but it was up for discussion. The wetlands were an important aspect of this area. So they have taken lot five, that east side, out of this completely for developing higher density. I think with that, I'll stand by for any questions.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Brandy, the intent as, as presented has been for two or three fourplexes, what have you. But being that the property would be going to R three, is there a max, did you do any calculations on the maximum number of units that could go on the property?
Yes, I did previously. And when I said that, I was like, oh, and I didn't put it in my report. So there's a hundred and eleven thousand square feet. So if you had two bedroom units, you would need seventeen hundred square feet per unit. So there could be sixty-five units. Obvious, that's worst case scenario for two bedroom units. There's other things that have to be accounted for with that, for parking and detention.
Restrict some of that, reduce that number potentially.
For sure. That's just the maximum.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
So with the proposed replating boundaries there, combining the existing ones, there'd be no requirement to do any kind of mitigations for the existing wetlands for any development?
Nope.
Okay.
No, they, they wouldn't be touching them.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for staff?
Mr. Chair. Brandy, so.
Brandy.
Go ahead, Blake.
Brandy, on that other map that you had that showed the wetlands, if, if you could just pull that back up and just maybe highlight on that map what is in scope for this discussion?
This area right here, if you can see that? Oh, let me get, I think that I can get that pointer.
Just kind of the edges of the wetlands extend in, but that would not be in the area where it would be buildable on the lot in either case?
Right. Yep. It would most likely be within their setback area. And either way, they couldn't, they couldn't build in it or disturb it unless they wanted to pay.
I guess more importantly, it won't affect their proportion amount of their plat that they would have to take away for wetlands because it's not encroaching on the existing boundaries, right?
Right.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Rhonda, you had.
Oh, I'm sorry, Rhonda, go ahead. Okay, my question is, is that there's already some huge dirt piles there. Is any of the dirt piles in the wetlands or are they where they're proposing this new plat?
Yeah, so they did get their proper grading permits for placing that fill and they are not within the wetlands.
Mr. Chair. I'm sorry.
For Rhonda.
No, you're good, you're good. My question, Brandy, please. So getting back to the water detention, would they, even with the wetlands at those southern tips there, would they still have holding ponds or not?
Yeah, as long as they, and they most likely will, but if they have over one acre of impervious surface, then they have to have detention ponds. And then it would have to be looked at as far as where they place it and then what kind of improvement, like, depending on the type of pond that they do, they couldn't put like infrastructure or something in it, but that would have to be checked off by the Corps where, where they proposed to put the ponds. But yes, they would be required to have their own detention ponds and the wetlands as they are do not count for that.
Mr. Case.
Brandy, there's proximity of R three zoning just across the street. The comprehensive land use plan says this development, the type, this type of development would generally comport with what was in the land use plan. Is that, is that an accurate statement?
No. So there's also some conflicting information between all the plans that we have. So the Lake Compeska master plan in twenty nineteen said that this area would be open space. Well, the Lake Compeska master plan was also underway when this was annexed and zoned in December of twenty eighteen. So the, and then the fact that it was annexed and zoned as R one, this property, you can't call it an open space. And obviously, the Lake Compeska master plan was done by an independent consultant where that was their opinion. But regardless, this area is annexed and platted and has a buildable right. Granted, today it's R one. But then, and then, so then the comp plan in twenty twenty was updated. It shows this area as annexed and zoned as residential, which doesn't get into the specifics of the density of it, if it's R one or R three. And then, the, the CL district that we just adopted shows this area as CL two, which would be in lake proximity for, for having the availability to rezone this commercial.
It doesn't mean that it has to be, it's eligible.
Yes. Yep. So kind of a lot of different studies and information that are conflicting and, but just wanted to at least be factual with.
But the only thing, the only active land use plan that we have that's been adopted is the comprehensive plan. It's not the Lake Compeska master plan.
Yes.
And that plan has identified it as residential with no density requirements.
Right.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair. So the green area that you're showing there, Brandy, is this something that will never be given buildable rights then?
You can never say never because it's up to the US Army Corps of Engineers jurisdiction. So if they wanted to go to extravagant measures and I just, it's jurisdictional wetland, that makes it very hard to ever manipulate.
Right. So the, the Army Corps of Engineers is in control of that. They could tomorrow say, yeah, we don't care if you build on it. Correct? I mean, they could.
They could.
You'd have to mitigate it and you'd.
Right. And I'm just saying, as of right now, chances are that green area will not be developed.
Except, no, they can't because there's actually federal guidelines that they can't. So that, yeah, those would have to change.
So chances are in the next fifty years, that's not going to get built on?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I feel pretty confident that I'm not a, not a, can't see the future.
Right. I'm not going to hold you to that. I'm just curious where we're at.
They're, they're very protected. Jurisdictional wetlands are, yeah, I, I feel confident in saying that.
Any other questions from the board for, okay, Brandy, let's go ahead and open it for public hearing? Any on the online or present, come forward and identify yourself.
Do you want to have the owner first?
I, priority wise, is.
It doesn't.
It, yeah, either whoever.
That's your distraction. Generally, generally, we take proponent.
Okay.
It's, it's a good practice to take proponent testimony first.
I thought you were representing the development of it, so we can have the owner come forward or the applicant. Do you want to? Want to be heard? And just go ahead, please identify yourself for the record.
Russell Warner.
And Aaron Hanson with Campsco. Go ahead, guys. You got the floor. So what we're looking at is really building two sets of townhomes, a total of eight units on two separate lots, essentially is what we're looking at. Yeah, yeah. Any further questions that you guys might have for us?
Is your intent on the townhomes to have them be rental or are you looking at more of a condominium type development?
Yeah, good question. No, we're, we're not looking to rent them. We're looking for ownership.
How many stalls of garage are you thinking?
Two stall garages.
So it'll be two bedroom, two bathroom, two stall?
That has not been determined yet.
Will it be two story or one story? You know, like a tuck under or?
It hasn't necessarily been determined yet.
Yep. We're still in the, that stage of determining that, so. Any other questions from the commission or the applicants?
Right, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Gentlemen, do you have anything further that you wanted to testify to for this application? No, other than we, we feel like it's an appropriate land use, given the proximity to R three adjacent. I guess I'd just point out that I myself live across the street. So we, we are very mindful of any potential issues and I guess we stand by with any concerns or questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else who would like to come forward for the open hearing?
My name is Leaf Erickson and we own the property, my wife and I, directly across the street from the east approach, I think, is where it would be. And I just had a few concerns, I guess. And I guess my main one, I would just defer to the council that, do they think it would be an asset to Watertown? It seems like we, like maybe it'd be a better place for these types of things. And being that it was brought in in two thousand eighteen and purchased in twenty twenty-two, with the zoning being known, I'm just wondering, was there an expectation to rezone it at the time? And is there, and with the dirt, with the grading plan out there and the, all the dirt being moved there, was there also some sort of expectation that they thought in advance that it would be rezoned and they could do the project? Or I'm just kind of wondering what's driving that? Yeah.
So I'll answer that. The ownership changed. So the, the previous owner brought it in for that house that was currently there and then they sold it. And then, so the new owners had the different plan. The grading actually was because of the proximity with Stony Point and the need to remove fill up there and knowing that no matter what happened here, they would need fill. So that's, and that's why we issued the grading permit, not for any preconceived notion that any zoning would be approved. It's just because it was, you can approve a grading plan in any area. And it was ideal when it was in proximity to where they had to remove fill. So, but that also doesn't matter for us issuing a permit.
And then I missed a lot of the history on this, so if I say something incorrect or put my foot in the mouth, please let me know. I just heard one snippet from a previous meeting that if it was known, like if, maybe if the council member was on the board at the time, he wouldn't have voted to annex the, the property into the city, but it kind of got in under the wire, so to speak, or, or I don't know the exact how that went back then. But does anyone know the context of that or?
Well, originally, from the county's perspective, the property was initially developed, the house was initially developed in the county. And being that they had enough area that they'd like to sell off some of those lots, the county wouldn't allow them to plat any additional properties because you're well aware, you get the one per thirty-five acres or what have you, or, but there was one, at least a development right on that property at the time of the county zoning. So the county forced the hand of the landowner to come to the city and bring that into the city. I think that's, that was the first step, right, Brandy?
Yes.
And then, and then they came and petitioned to be annexed. And at that time, they were annexed with these, was it, did they bring all five lots in at that time to be annexed at that time?
They, they actually subdivided further because of the water agreement. But yeah, I think that at the time, if they could have, the main, the main reason for this was to be able to have city utilities and then potentially develop further. And like, so that is, but I, I think if, if they could, if the previous owners could have, they would have liked to just develop in the county. But they, you can't when you're adjacent to city limits.
But when they came in, they rezoned R one and it was going to be like sold off as individual lots at first, right?
Yep. And that was, that was the previous owner that, when they annexed and zoned it. So then all the rezones were done by this current, well, not even the current ownership group, but it was done with a different ownership group.
Yeah, thank you. And I guess I would just defer to the council and with one more comment that the, even though the land across the street is R three, it's not really being used as like a multifamily housing. It's mostly single family, although there are twin homes there, connected housing. And I'm just wondering if the, if the petitioner's plan could also be done with leaving the zoning the same and getting some other type of permission that way. But that's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the room or online for the open hearing? Okay, go ahead and close the open hearing. Could I ask for a motion?
Bill, we, we do have one more.
I will reopen the hearing, open hearing. Please come forward and identify yourself. Thank you.
I'm Carrie Ness. We live directly across from the home that's there on the end. I don't really have a lot to say. I do feel like it's an appropriate use, considering the R three housing, that we do have a couple of single family homes and then it's twin homes for quite a ways. And I feel like it's enough space to be able to do what they're planning. I do understand that they don't have to be held to that, but I do feel like it's a large piece of property to be able to do what they want to do there. I feel like I had one more thing I wanted to say, but I don't remember what it was, so I'm really got about.
I'd just question for you. Sorry, I should have asked earlier as well. Does it make a difference to you whether it's a one story, two story, three story? Is there, does that affect your consideration at all?
That doesn't bother me because I'm not really looking that way. I'm looking the opposite.
Okay.
Yep.
I guess I would ask, because I didn't ask you.
I don't, I don't have a feeling on that. I'm more concerned about the density and the traffic.
Okay. Gotcha.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, one more check so I don't miss anybody else. Two meetings in a row, I've done that. I gotta open my eyes better. All right, close the open hearing. At this time, we'll go ahead and ask for a motion.
I'll make a recommend, I'll make a motion to recommend approval to the City Council resolution.
Do we have a second?
Rezoning. I don't remember the number.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Like to open it for discussion amongst the Plans Commission.
Mr. Chair, I made the motion in support of the request. It's consistent with my previous votes in regard to this matter over the years. I, I think it's an appropriate use. I think it's an appropriate density. I think the proximity to R three zoning that's currently, which used to be R one zoning and commercial zoning years ago when Sandy Shortz was in that general area. We have the ability to rezone property and make things more dense. And we've, and we've shown that in the past. The land use plan shows it as residential with no direction on density. But I think if, if the R three wasn't across the road, I maybe would have more of a pause, but I think it's just part of the neighborhood. And as, as proposed, granted, understanding that they could always sell it to me and I could decide to put a hundred and sixty units in, that's, but that's not what's being asked for us. And I, I think it's appropriate use.
My question is, is will they stick with two eightplexes or would that just be a starting of a huge development?
We can't really, sorry, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, I'm just wondering.
The question is, the risk is out there. The ordinance allows for it. Where it's like anything, we, we are making a recommendation is, do we feel that the zoning is effect, is, is, is okay for that neighborhood? And I'm saying, from my perspective, it's right across the street. Tornado could come in, wipe out all of those things on that side and they could build up tall and they could put more units than there are there right now, too.
Any other discussion amongst the commission?
Well, I would just kind of echo what Bonnie is saying, that, you know, the, it's at this time is even how the report reads, you know, at this time, that's what their intent is. And when you got that, you just got that wild card. Everybody's intent is what you want to hear until it's not. The only saving grace for me on this one, finally, is that we have the wetlands designated where I, you know, at least in my lifetime, I can, I can, you know, roll over my grave, but I probably won't see anybody, you know, disrupt that land. And that's, that's huge to me. I mean, it sounds silly, but I mean, our lake is our, you know, we, we abuse it. We just really do. And so being that the wetlands are, are secure there, I, I don't like the at this time comment, you know, that they intend the two fourplexes, that, you know, like I said, they could change that, but we somewhat have their hands tied. They only have X amount of space to build on. of space to build on, and they have to retain their own waters, so that's all going to take space. I wish they were going for an R2, I would, I would rubber stamp that pretty quickly, but R3, like Todd is saying, it, it does leave the door open more, but I guess it's probably the best plan we've seen in the last 10 years that I've been.
That's a good point, though, I mean, in terms of the, with the development, would an R2 fit with the, you know, the expressed intent right now is, or does it have to be R3?
Yeah, so I actually discussed that with the applicant, and the idea is that they would like to keep it all, like, they want to do a condo plat with it. So it would be in one lot, and then they'll condo plat the units so that they can do one HOA. So that's really the idea, otherwise, the four-plex is allowed on an individual R2 lot.
Yes, sir. One final comment, in all the public hearings that we've had on this property over the last 10 years, it's a 50/50, one's kind of for it, one's would just assume not see it happen. I don't see 100 people that we've seen in the past, I don't see the water conserva, you know, conservancy board, people that are in here, to me, it becomes...
It's not a bar tavern application, you know, commercial, so, we'd have a full room, yeah.
And at the same point in time, we as a community should also be not always looking at restricting where growth can occur, but encouraging growth if it has a minimal amount of impact on the surrounding properties.
You know, and I would, and I would say, you know, because we have signaled with the comprehensive use plan, this could be potentially, you know, considered for commercial lake forward, and it's not, not coming forward as that, but we have, as a community and development-wise signaled, that we would be willing to entertain that, so.
And the CL district does allow for dwelling units on the top floors, so that would create, I mean, you could do as many units, too. I think the largest things with what have changed with this proposal is, keep in mind that it is just 2.55 acres, and that they do have the wetlands delineated, so they've, they've shrunk this, the footprint, and then also are showing those wetland areas for the larger, you know, large issues that we, that we have heard in the past.
Any other further?
Yeah, and again, I agree with Brandy on that, the green, the, what did I say? The wetland being set aside makes me feel much better, and I'm just going to have to take a leap of faith that, you know, I think the condo idea, that does give eight families the opportunity to enjoy the lake, so I'm going to, you know, cross my fingers and my eyes and my arms, and hope that that's actually what does happen, then, is, is the intent of the, of the eight condo units, and that's what gets sold off and enjoyed by eight new owners.
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, I said it was going to be last, this will be the last one. I think I can even be more supportive of something like this and this density, because they're not on the lake, they're across the street, but they're so close to a state park that they have access, and so the people are going to be having boats and things, it's not a very far.
Probably young families.
Young families, I think, to me, it's, it's a natural, it's a win.
Okay, I got one question. With the, with the R3 zoning and stuff, and let's say they have, you know, the condos and stuff, are, is there going to be enough space, or is it allowed in R3 to have like condo big storage garages, too? In the R3?
Not necessarily in the R3, they can do accessory garages, which there are limitations to.
But not the sheds, just like a garage that would, you know, match and everything, it wouldn't be like just a great big tri, you know?
Yeah.
Tangled shed.
Yeah, so the use would have to be incidental to the apartments for garages. Storage shops is a separate use, which is not allowed in the R3.
Right, and I guess, you know, if they're obviously going to have to not only have, accommodate the bedroom, so if you do a three-bedroom, four-bedroom, your parking spaces go up, you know, so that would be beneficial to us if they go four-bedroom units, because then they just got to give us more, you know, ground space, plus if they, you know, the street parking has to be accommodated for, so we, we are protected that way, which makes me feel better. If, so if they go 10-bedroom per unit, they have to have parking for 10, so, yeah.
And, and then also more square footage, too, so, like, the max is 2,500 that we have in ordinance anyway, because you don't usually see a multifamily unit over four bedrooms. So for that, I mean, you have 1,100 square feet divided by 2,500, that knocks it down to 44, but still, you need all that parking. So those things considered, and the other thing is that you can't have stacking, like you see in some townhouse situations, that they utilize the space in front of the garage, and then you can't do that, you can't stack them, it has to be, like, your garage stall is your spot, you can't have the driveway then as another spot, it has to be a separate parking spot, so.
So we have a motion and a second, I didn't hear any admits to, let's go ahead and take a vote, or did you have a comment, I'm sorry? Okay, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, it's unanimous, aye, aye, so Brandy, believe that carries, Canadian friends, aye. I will turn it back over to Liam.
All right, thanks, Bill.
Next item is 6B, B25-198, Brandy, please tell us about this development lot agreement.
Okay, thank you, Liam, so this request is a little unique to what we normally see as staff administers development lot agreements typically, and that's why I say this one's a bit unique. Let me get it pulled up. So the property owners of 364 and 365 North Lake Drive is Jonathan and Dorothy McAravy, and they came in with the request for a building permit to place a shed that is over 200 square feet, in total, what did I, it's like 240 square feet. So the, the primary house is on 364 North Lake Drive, I'm going to zoom into this a little bit. And then, the how, they own the, the lot across the street, which is where their legal non-conforming accessory structure that is around, I think, 1,500 square feet, yeah, 1,520 square feet currently. Did you have a question?
I was waving at the mayor when he walked in, keep going, Brandy, you're doing great, keep going.
Okay. Okay, so 365 is where that legal non-conforming garage is, that is the lot here on the north side, that's where they would like to place the accessory structure, and so when they came in for the permit, that's when we ran into the issue, is that we can't issue permits for a lot that is zoned R1, single-family residential, if they do not have a primary structure. And so since the house that has been in the same ownership since 1968, from the information that I got from the courthouse, then they, we, we can't issue the permit. Then the other issue is that development lot agreements state that they can be referred to the planning commission. And the issue with the definition is that we say continuous frontage, so you can do a development lot agreement and tie two properties together that are under single ownership when they're adjacent, and continuous frontage. So that was the, and I do feel like that is the correct intent and way to administer development lot agreements. This would be a great applicant for an RG district, however, they don't have enough land area, and also the neighbors that are utilizing the same type of situation on the east, together do also not rezone, they don't have enough land area to rezone the one acre to the RG district. So that is where, in this scenario, though, because I want to make sure that we're not opening up a can of worms, and that we're being consistent with this one, because on the comprehensive, or the master transportation plan, Cuts Avenue, and like on, on here, it's technically North Lake Drive, but informally, we know it is Cuts Avenue. It very much is the access point for 19 homes, otherwise, it's not the highly trafficked road. It is also considered a local street on the master transportation plan, which gives, gives assurance, because the idea behind a development lot agreement is so that somebody would be able to utilize, you know, expand their lot if they're able to obtain property that's adjacent to them, that also doesn't create any other non-conformities from the amount that they take. But then, then they can utilize that for their detached garage, whatnot. And the idea behind not having it be continuous or across right-of-way is so that you're not having somebody cross a potentially collector route or whatnot, and trying to utilize the property as one. But yeah, kind of the, the main reasons behind, behind why staff does feel like this is appropriate, and also the fact that there is a detached accessory structure there that has existed since 1968, is to bring it into better conformance, because the two properties have been treated as one since 1968. So for those reasons, and that's why the request is here, that we would memorialize a development lot agreement, and then move forward with, and issuing the permit for them to place the shed that they're requesting. The other thing that this does is, when it ties the two together, I mean, it is limiting them on what they can do with each of these properties, so they're not, and that was described to them, and this was, this is the way that they plan to continue to use the properties. So it's really just memorializing something that's been in effect, and allowing staff to be able to issue permits that is within, yeah, is within what ordinance allows, so. That'll stand by for questions.
Thank you, Brandy, any questions for staff?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Mr. Case.
This is a common thing at most lake development, that we see, we call them backlots for all practical purposes, because the lakefront lot is a giant, and in many places, you're not allowed to put two principal structures on, if I own two properties in common. So in this situation, it makes the most sense to me, it fix probably, fixes something that has been in the, you know, no one really probably even knew about it for, until they came and asked permission. The other thing is, if in the event, say somewhere down the road, they decided to remove all those structures, they could, could they dissolve the development lot agreement, sell me that lot, and I could build a house on it?
Yep. As long as everything was brought into conformance.
Right.
So we wouldn't let them dissolve the DLA unless that garage went away.
Perfect.
Okay.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Okay, will they be able to, now with this development agreement, they will not be able to just sell off the garage and keep the house?
No.
They can't do that.
Yep.
Because on some of those backlots and some of the other lakes, they can, but this one, they will not be able to.
Yes, and so that is actually, today they could, but if we do this DLA, that's going to be a recorded document that will hold them, like, it would, it would mess with their title work, just tying them together, so.
Beautiful. And this would be, we're not going to see a lot of this at the lake, there's maybe a few other instances you might see this, and the thing that we're wanting to maybe, we pigeonhole it so that somebody doesn't use the same logic in place to do that in what I would call city proper, where I own this corner lot here, and then I go across the alley, and I wanted to tie those two together, making it very, very to this, specific to this request.
And there's a historical context, too, because in reality, this, although we have knowledge back to 1968, this probably goes back nearly 100 years, would be my guess.
Yes.
90 to 100 years that both of these lots have had common ownership.
Because I believe the house was built in 1907.
Yes, so more than 100 years. Yeah, this is the wayhouse, so one of the, one of the old, the wayhouse. I think it's the wayhouse, what, I don't know, but this is the green one.
This shed is, this shed is green.
It's an old one, it's been there for a long time, and it's been in common ownership ostensibly that entire time, and known since 1968. Further questions for staff?
Chair.
Go ahead.
Brandy, so to clarify, you had the, the little yard shed sitting there, does that have to go away? Or where is that located? Is that?
That's what they're trying to get the building permit for.
Yeah.
Oh, that's what it's going to look like?
Yep. That's what they're trying to place.
Behind the garage or something.
It's at the neighbor's house right now.
Okay, so then I'm, okay, it's not going on the front lot, that's going on the back lot.
Yes, so you see the lake in the back on this picture, that's because it's...
But then explain to me what's already on the back lot.
Just the detached garage, and then they have a basketball court.
Oh, okay, because I thought it looked like two buildings already.
And then they have a gazebo, okay, so the, the lake lot is where the house is, and then they have a gazebo, and then on this back lot, there's just the garage, and then they're proposing to put the shed on the back lot. Because today, they could put the shed on the front lot, on the lake lot.
Okay.
But they're using, they want to utilize that.
Behind some lilacs or something, I think.
Yeah.
Right?
Yes, like you can see there.
Okay, but now I want to raise chickens, how many, how many more sheds can I bring in?
Only one.
One more shed?
Yep.
And we'll have a discussion.
Go ahead, Commissioner. Brandy, real quick, if, if they were to bring like a, a shipping container and drop it on that lot, would they need a permit?
Yes, they would, and they also would need to make sure to finish it, that it was residential in nature.
Gotcha.
Because, you know, we've had a couple of those around the lake, that they have to, they have, they side them, and you don't even know that it's a shipping container.
Right, so it doesn't matter what type of mobile structure it is, they'd all have to be permitted, okay?
Yep.
Is that something that we'd ever want to consider? I mean, I know the city of Sioux Falls has an ordinance on how to use shipping containers, many other communities are looking at how they use them, and whether they be for commercial uses or residential uses, I just know it's becoming very chic as far as how those things are used, and, and again, if they're done properly, you know, but built to residential standards can mean a whole lot on what they look like on the outside.
We can maybe take that up a new business, or just set it for an agenda, an agenda meeting, we're getting a little bit far afield. Any further questions regarding this particular development lot agreement at this particular lot for the McAravies?
No, not a question, but just a comment, if you've ever driven by, by this property, it's basically treated as one property. I grew up on this street, I've driven by it thousands of times, and as far as, you know, there being any ache about crossing a right-of-way on this one, I can tell you that is not a well-traveled road. You could probably go sit in it, in the middle of it for an hour, and be fine, so, but it just makes sense on the location.
But what I notice is that the garage matches the house, it all coordinates in together.
Yes, thank you for both of your comments.
So then, does that make the house white? The garage is.
The White House is next, the White House is next door, but we're not, we're going to leave that one there. There is no public hearing required for a development lot agreement, so I will accept a motion in favor of the application in a second.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Lutsky, second by? I will second that. Spire, any further discussion regarding the development lot agreement?
Just in support of the motion, this seems to bring it in better conformance for what the use is, and memorialize it, so I agree that this is appropriate way ahead.
All right, I agree, thank you, very robust discussion, everyone, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Open public comment, Mayor, do you want to talk to us? Perfect. Does anybody else in the interweb want to talk to us? Now is the time to bring up something that is not otherwise on the agenda. Hearing none, new business?
I just wanted to clarify, with these development lot agreements, just to set the record very straight, this lot exists at, like, this, this building exists, now if you have a lot across the street that is vacant, it's not applicable, so, just completely, and I like the head nons, okay? We're on the same page, all right.
Sounds good. Any other new business, besides perhaps shipping containers sometime in the distant future? Okay, old business?
None that I have.
Perfect, that's what I was hoping you would say, executive session, we don't need that, we are adjourned, thank you, bye.
Thank you.
Thanks all.